Good evening, everyone. The 562nd meeting of the Village of Dupuy Planning Board will come to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Member Soha?
Here.
Member Sunderland?
Here.
Member Federovitch?
Here.
Member Morowski?
Here.
Chairman Machieski?
Would everybody please rise for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which has one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust our all. Notification of emergency exits, please.
The emergency exits are located to my left and to the rear of the room. In the event of an alarm or emergency, please move in an orderly fashion to the exits and evacuate the building.
Thank you. So we have two items on the agenda for tonight, and obviously, we have some people here. Just a little housekeeping. We do have an agenda that we follow, and after presentations are made and we've gone through various departments and the board, we open it up to public concerns and comments. At that point, if you do have a concern or a comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Thank you. So our first item on the agenda is for the property located at 360 Gould Avenue. Could we have the legal notice, please?
Please take notice that the Village of Dupuy Planning Board will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 2nd at 7:00 PM. Pre-board meeting begins at 6:30 PM in the conference room in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, Dupuy, New York. To consider the application for submission by Thomas and Christine Schuster for the property located at 360 Gould Ave., Dupuy, New York, 14043, the following matters to be reviewed. They are requesting the following: to submit for concept approval for a 4,500 square foot storage building. Any and all persons interested in such application will be heard at this time.
You're good. Yeah, we have it in front of us.
Okay, gentlemen, for the record, please, could you state your names and your relationship to the project, please?
Okay, my name is Tim Arlington. I'm with Apex Consulting Survey and Engineering Service, PC. I'm the engineering consultant for Tom and Christine Schuster for their project.
Tom Schuster.
Okay, could you give us an overview of what you're proposing, please?
Okay, so briefly, Tom and Christine have owned this parcel right here for approximately 25 years. And it's just that time that, of course, they had, there's a house there, little building in the back, they've basically been renting it out, correct?
Correct.
But at this point, what they'd like to do is just take the house down, put up a 45 by 100 building here. This would enable them to lease out individual bays to other contractors that they have a relationship with. Tom, who's, and for personally, I'm sorry, I mean, Tom and his son have owned a construction business for several years, and they're obviously the neighboring parcel. Now, as part of this, we would combine the lots because there's, at this point, we'll have to go to the zoning board for a few of the chairments, if we have a lot more of them, if we did not combine the parcels together. Essentially, there's not a lot to the project. Obviously, we would provide water and sewer connections into that, the front of the bathroom or something like that. The area adjacent to that, which is already kind of a, just a kind of brush here, that would be the access to each one of the bays. The building itself, it's a very small lot, a very small area. We would keep the building back a little over five feet on the north side with the rattler tracks, the fire code provisions. The same thing on the west side, which actually is a couple of feet further than the actual existing house would be. And then, of course, it also would be fairly close to the road. This is obviously very consistent with all the other buildings, as you can see, not only on Tom's property, but other neighboring houses and businesses. All of them are essentially very close to the road. A lot of them are very close to the north line, and they're all very small lots. And then, because of that, we'll have to go into the zoning board and get relief for the setback requirements. As far as any storm drains, we'll probably connect into an existing receiver there. Again, it's a very small lot. We're not adding a lot of additional hard space, so the impact is very minimal, but putting this building in there versus what the two existing buildings that are there now that would be coming down.
Mr. Arlington, you're here tonight for just a concept review?
Yeah, we would, we really can't go any farther than that until this board is conceptually okay with it, and then we would go to the zoning board to lay us for relief for some of the setback variances that were required. Assuming we get those, then we would proceed with engineering and come back to this board once we have those things corrected or completed.
Mr. Arlington, you mentioned about the use of, be used by Mr. Schuster's subcontractors and his equipment, and you said private. What did you mean by private?
I would use myself for my business.
You're not looking to use this for commercial space?
Yes, we would. I would, there's going to be five bays. I got a tarve to store in one. We would use one bay with the construction trucks that we have, and then I have two, three available for us.
Okay, so there could possibly be commercial space running those, then, correct?
Right, landscaper, plumber type of business, yes.
Okay.
They'd be, what, 900 square feet roughly?
Correct.
So, Mr. Arlington, Mr. Schuster, have you given any thought to taking this building and turning it where the front of the building would face south, and that would kind of alleviate you from any ZBA?
He's talking about changing, rotating the building 90 degrees.
That's okay.
That would alleviate you any, anything with ZBA?
We still have setbacks.
We would still have some, some variances we probably would be required as far as-
Rear variances?
The rear may, you may, depending on how far back you go with it.
Yeah, that one we might make. I don't know that we meet the other requirements, though. We'd have to, I mean, if you're, if you're looking at a building that long, it would extend all the way over to here, it would be very close to this building here, which we'd have to be careful about. Access to that and fire code separation from that building itself.
And obviously, give the concept, okay, this is going to require combining the lots into one?
Correct. Regardless of the orientation of the building, we would still have to combine the lots, otherwise, we still have, probably, you can't have a building across property lines, of course.
Correct. And I'm sure you're aware, you're going to have to provide a fence between the residential and the new building?
We can do that, yes. There's one, I believe, there now, but there's one, yeah.
There's one half one.
Yeah, so we would provide a fence there if that's, if that's necessary.
Yeah, that'll be one of the requirements.
Okay.
That's actually per code.
Okay, fine.
And one of the things, when you do your final submittal, we will get a rendering of what the building will look like?
Yes, we'll provide you a colored elevation of the building.
Obviously, you know the neighborhood. It's combination, commercial, industrial, residential. We want just something that's going to stay with the aesthetics of the neighborhood also. We'll open it up to comments from the board?
I don't have any.
Comments from the board?
I would just like you to take a good look at turning the building, because you started by saying, you know, all the buildings are the same, the setbacks are all, you know, the street is the way it is. Obviously, we don't like to use that to continue doing that. Just take a good look at it. I think that's something we would like to see. I'm not saying that you have to. I'm saying you might make it a little easier in terms of your variances and stuff.
Okay. Any other comments from the-
Provided it fits, of course.
Right.
I get it.
Any other comments from the board? Legal, Sam?
Nothing.
Okay, code enforcement, Don, Kate?
We talked to him, most of it was the setback issues. That's all we really have on our end. Until they come up with the actual, if you approve this concept today, until we actually see the layout for parking, snow removal, site lighting, you know, drainage, that would all be contingent of that. But there's nothing here right now, other than the variances they'd require for the setbacks on our end.
Kate, anything?
Uh, I, I agree with what Don's saying. Either way, I think they're going to need a variance. I guess it's just kind of which one do you want to pick? But I'm okay with the building being there.
Well, if they go sideways with the building like you're recommended, though, that may alleviate you not even having to go in front of the-
Zoning board?
The zoning board.
Yeah, I'm actually looking for the setback between buildings versus for the-
Yeah, buildings on the same ground isn't the same thing, though. Yeah, but it would just be the fire, touch fire rating-
Yeah.
-that you'd put in.
Yeah, that's true.
That's, that's, that's just something for you to think about between now and the zoning board, because you could always call the zoning board off if you decide you want to change that.
And obviously, at this point, nothing from Terry from engineering, right?
No, Terry sent this over, what is the same thing we already talked about. He sent it over saying the exact same requirements, which would be the setbacks.
Okay.
And obviously, he can't comment on anything else until we have an actual-
Final submittal.
Yep.
Kate, anything else?
No.
Kate, we'll open it to public concerns and comments. Any public concerns and comments? Okay, with that, a motion would be in order?
I, Member Federovitch, make the motion to make a recommendation to the village to accept the concept pending the topics that we discussed, looking at turning the building, your ZBA requirements, things like we discussed with the, uh, storage for snow, dumpster storage, lighting, the fence, finish the fence on the far side. I can cover it all.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
On a motion by Member Federovitch, seconded by Member Soha, to make a recommendation to the village board to accept the concept, submittal. We have a roll call vote, please.
Member Soha?
Yes.
Member Sunderland?
Yes.
Member Morowski?
Yes.
Member Federovitch?
Yes.
Chairman Machieski?
Yes, 5-4, motions carried. And, Mr. Arlington, you know that all about, you've been here before-
Yes.
-for looking for the snow storage dumpster-
Well, I need, I need to, well, Tom and I will discuss orientation to see whether we understand your comments, whether we decide to pursue that versus what we show. But either way, we'll have to go to the zoning board, I'm assuming, to, to get relief, regardless, even if we change the orientation, we'll have to determine that, that, how much impact that has on the variances that we are at this point pursuing. I do have a question for the building inspector, the code enforcement. When is the zoning board, then?
The zoning board's-
It is May 23rd.
May 23rd?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not next week, then?
No.
Okay. Originally, you told me it was next week.
If I did, I apologize.
Okay, that's all right. I don't want to show up here and not, nobody else be here, that's all.
Gives you a little more time to maybe take a look at that.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I understand that, okay. All right, give me one second to write that down. May 23rd, you said, correct?
Yep.
And that is at 7:00 PM as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no-
All right, okay. All right, well, thank you for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Look forward to seeing you guys again.
Okay.
And if you, if you do a rendering with turning it, do you want to just email it over to me, I'll take a look at it?
Okay.
And then I can give you, you know, if we require any setbacks or anything from there.
Okay.
Either way, we'll still talk to the zoning board if you need anything-
Okay.
-and decide that, you know, what was discussed here today-
Okay.
-we'll make that determination, all right?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is for the property located at 3100 Walden Avenue. Could we have the legal notice, please?
Please take notice that the Village of Dupuy Planning Board will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Pre-board meeting begins at 6:30 PM in the conference room in the council chambers of the municipal building, 85 Manitow Street, Dupuy, New York, to consider the application for submission by Brian Loren, Lorenk, for the property located at 3100 Walden Ave., Dupuy, New York, 14043. The following matters to be reviewed. They are requesting the following: to erect a 40 by 48 pole barn. Any and all persons interested in such application be heard at this time.
Thank you. Who's here representing the project? If you could come forward?
My son Brian Lorenk and my son Danny are owners and owners.
Okay, could you give us an overview of what you are proposing, please?
What we're proposing, we have an existing building, we're proposing to attach the side of the building, a 40 deep by 60, 40 by 48, excuse me, building for cold storage. It will be attached directly to the building. Aesthetically, it would be, look exactly like the building exists now, with stone across the vinyl siding with an exit, with an asphalt roof.
Okay, when you say storage, could you elaborate more on that?
Vehicles. We have a lot of vehicles, construction vehicles that want to keep inside. It's going to be used exclusively for our business. We are not going to rent it to anybody else. It's just our, our use for the business.
Okay, and you're, as you're well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And materials, just so we don't have to store them outside.
That's a little issue, so, yes. You realize you have two separate parcels there, correct?
Yes, correct. We own both of them, we're just adjoining them all into one.
Yeah, they would have to be, because of the way you're proposing that building, it would go on the part, the other parcel, so that's going to have to be-
Yes.
-make one parcel. So again, you guys brought it up, but, yes, the condition of the property right now with the pallets of broken shingles playing around-
I have one part there. I'm trying to keep it as clean as I can, we just don't have enough room. I mean, it's, we have this, you know, I don't want to keep bringing more vehicles in there, you know, box trucks or anything to store or anything. I'm hoping this is a temporary thing. We're ready to go. I mean, if approved by this-
So, if you get the approval for this, that would alleviate any outside storage as far as materials?
100%, everything will be stored inside.
Okay.
Got a lot of money sitting outside there, materials, that some we could lock up real easily and-
Sure do.
And what about the vehicles? I mean, I know there's a motor home sitting there, and it looks like some jet skis.
That will all be gone.
It's all going to be gone?
The motor home might be parked up back, or I can move it, all the other vehicles will be put inside. That tractor trailer there is part materials too, that will be gone also.
And that old U-Haul box?
Gone. I mean, I'm doing everything I can to clean it up as much as I can. I was discussing with the neighbors over there, there's a chain link fence, I don't know how I have to get permission from the building inspector to go on and stain that side of it, just to clean it up. I'm trying my best to keep it as clean as I can. There's an old Q van in the back, the prior owners were supposed to take care of it, he didn't. Having a little issue with the title, so I'm going to have to try to, you know, most places won't take it without a title. So, I might have to cut it up into pieces, one piece at a time.
And there's that old tank that's got piped into the building. I'm sure you're not using it for anything.
No, no, that will be gone.
Okay.
That's, that was oil storage for oil chains.
Question from the board?
I'm going to want to go on the record, I spoke with legal, I'll be recusing in the situation I've known-
Yeah, I know Steve from high school, yes.
For a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a couple.
Yeah.
There'll be a chance for you to speak.
I just got a few questions.
There's a chance for public concerns and comments, we'll get to that.
I just have one quick question. The primary use of this entire area would be for what?
It's, we own a roofing business, obviously, 99% roofing. It would just be to store materials in there, and the vehicles out of sight, out of mind. Just trying to clean it up, the presentation. I don't like the way it looks now with the vehicles sitting outside, I want to have everything inside.
Okay.
And I, but my plan is, when the building's done, to put a fence from that building back down, isn't that what it's-
Bissel.
Bissel, down bissel like this, blocking up, so we can see him there. I ask him that.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Sam?
No, nothing from me.
Code enforcement, Don, Kate?
Okay, so, everything's being discussed here, I just want to make sure that everyone understands what's happening. When you moved in there, it's considered a business occupancy, more of an office-type setting.
Right.
And we discussed this, if you decide you want to store materials and vehicles and stuff, that would be considered a construction yard, which triggers a whole bunch of different requirements. If you're going to use it strictly as office there and store the materials and vehicles inside out of sight, then it could remain the way it is. If you decide that you're going to get bigger and you have to store things outside, then we actually have to come back in front of this board and file for a change of zoning, because you're in a C2 right now. You can only have a construction yard, which would be fenced in, lights, blacktop, the whole nine yards, would have to go through approval through this board. So that's the stuff we discussed when you first came in.
Right.
If you're going to keep everything inside this, and it's going to be an office, and you got your storage inside, it's completely different than a construction yard, so I just want to make sure I, I tell you the differentiating.
That's exactly what we're keeping.
Okay.
Trying to keep the stuff that you see outside inside.
Yes, so you understand what-
Yes.
-Don is saying, nothing outside.
Yes.
No vehicles, no nothing.
Correct. I mean, there can't be a pickup truck, nothing outside whatsoever.
Well, I mean, with the reason you said, want to see-
No, 80, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And you already talked about, you're getting rid of that other stuff, you're going to put a fence and stuff up, so, you know.
Trying to clean it up, like I said-
No, it's probably to be honest.
Probably 100% improvement already, from what I've heard.
And we did, and just so you understand too, there's nothing on here about a dumpster, because he has his own dump trailers-
Did he take?
And he said that any materials that are going to be thrown out will go in his dump trailers, which are parked inside for him to remove at a later time.
They're gone every day to the dumps.
We wouldn't require him to have a dumpster enclosure outside because of that purpose.
I think that would alleviate a lot of problems, they said, and pass for rats and everything, because every day dumpsters go, you know. It's roofing material, goes right to the dumps. No garbage is dumped there or anything.
Now, to be honest with you, driving down Walden at 4045, building looks good.
Thanks.
Turned out bissel, and you look in the back, not so good.
Yeah.
You know, that's, I'm sure, you know-
Oh, yeah.
We want to be appeasing to your neighbors.
Oh, yeah, 100%. I agree, yes. Well, yeah, I'm ready to go tomorrow, if I, when I get the approval. Soon as I can go, we get the approval, it's going to go, it'll be cleaned up. I move quick, you can see what I did there in a month, from the day we did the building remodel, also.
So that building, you know, you gave us kind of a run drain-
Mm-hmm.
-steel prefab building, basically, pole barn type?
Yes, it's going to look similar to the way the, the front is now, we're going to do stone four feet up, vinyl siding on the, up, and a shingle roof. It's not going to be an eyesore, you know, pole barn.
Matching, the color will match the existing-
Another thing I wanted to think about, I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt. The signs, you still have to file your sign permit for what's there? Are you planning on putting any other signs?
No.
Okay, because you can't have anything that faces a residential building.
Nope, nothing's going to face, no lighting in the back, I'll keep it, the only light that's up there is on the pole now.
Well, you could have a light, it just has to be light, it's got to be considered a-
Dark sky.
Dark sky friendly, which means it's, would have a shield on it that shines down into your yard, and it can't cascade over to the neighboring yards.
Not over the-
So, we prefer you have lighting.
Whatever you want.
So you're going to match that new building to the existing building?
Exactly, yep.
Color-wise and everything?
Color-wise, everything, yes.
Perfect. Kate?
I mean, for design sake, I think that would look nice over there, better than it is now.
Yeah.
Keeping all that stuff on the inside is going to benefit the neighborhood as well as you. I don't really see an issue with it, as long as all the setbacks and everything line up, and he puts up the proper fence and combines those lots. Yeah.
Can we, without combining those?
I think so.
That would be pending.
Yeah, does it make it a contingency?
So, you know, the final approval is going to be based on combining those lots, as we're just discussing with legal here, just to make sure.
It would be contingent. Final approval would be contingent on the lots being combined?
What's the protocol, combine the two lots?
You, you contact the county, tell them you want to combine the lots, they'll have you resurvey the property, they'll make a new SBL number for both those lots to be one, and then you would just bring that to us.
Okay, simple procedure.
Okay, we'll now open up to public concerns and comments.
We've got to have you come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please. You guys, stay nearby, don't go anywhere.
All right.
But give him, give him the stage.
If you just want, you can have a seat right in the front here.
Do you need help?
If it's easier for you to sit down, we can accommodate you.
I'm Kenneth Walter, K-E-N-A-E-T-H, Walter, W-A-L-T-E-R, 37 Bissel. I'm down about three houses on the other side. How, how high is that building going to be? Same height as the one that's there, the garage?
Yes, it's been mashed up to it exactly.
Okay, and where are the door entrances to go in and out the building? On, on the Bissel side or on the Walden side?
It's the Bissel.
Bissel.
There's going to be one overhead door on Bissel, 16-foot door.
So that means any trucks going in and out will be coming out on Bissel Ave. or get onto Walden, right?
Correct.
Correct.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it or anything, but I don't think that's right, that those got to, well, but it is what it is. It's, it's, it'll be fine. I, I was just concerned about that.
Okay.
I don't like the idea of coming out on Bissel, but it is what it is. By building an excess piece, will that down the price of our, our value of our property? Any? Should it? Would it?
We can't-
Hard to say.
We can't, we can't really comment on that, and even if we did, we could be wrong.
Okay, just asking a few questions.
What kind of trucks do you think are going to come out?
I don't know what kind, they're going to be, they're going to have supply trucks coming in with, I don't know, maybe shingles on a truck, to put in a truck, or they're going to come out on Bissel and turn out.
They could enter from Walden also.
Pardon?
They could enter from Walden also, so we could use a Walden.
I'm just asking. Okay.
And I'm sure the Loren's men would be happy to talk to you, answer any other questions you have.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, okay.
Stop by or anything like that.
Yeah.
Oh, just so you know, sir, the business that was there before this, they specialize in truck sales.
Yeah.
So I don't think those, those box vans and stuff they sold, they're any different than what they really have approaching their property, so it wouldn't really change much, I don't believe.
There's very minimal traffic there from us.
Okay.
I get there at 4:00 in the morning, that's 6:30 in the morning.
I know, there's a ton of stuff up there right now.
Yeah.
Okay, just question. Okay, just question.
Thank you.
Any other public concerns and comments?
I'm curious about the, the water runoff from the roof. Does that type of thing have gutters on it, or?
Yeah, but gutters on it, it's just in the way it is. I mean, big concern, you get a lot of people saying, we'll put a building runoff. There is a big DI in the back, which will stay there, a manhole cover, it's, the rain is, I'm going to say it in the wrong way, but when it rains, it's going to be exact sound of rain that would rain on that building that's going to go on the ground if it wasn't there. You know, you're doing a 40 by 60 building, the rain that lands on the building is going to go on the right on the ground.
Yeah, but what?
Well, there is a difference, though, just so you understand, with you doing the roofing, taking all that water and running it into downspouts and come down, it comes out in a lot greater concentration in certain areas, so you could...
One downspout on the back and the center of the parking lot, which won't be disturbed. There is a manhole cover, DI, these people over here, the issue before, they said with the water, so there is a DI there in the front, it's to Walden, so that...
So, it's going to run out to there?
Yes.
Okay.
Why do you quite understand it? It's going to run where?
There will be a downspout in the front and the back of the building, the one will run on the front of the concrete, blacktop concrete now towards Walden and bissel, the other one run in the back, and right in the back center of that vacant property is a big DI. A lot will go in there.
Our houses all get flooded and something.
Right.
And you take away all the, the difference is, you put up a, a building, and all that grass that was there, they're soaking up water, it just disappears.
Right, it's going exactly where the blacktop is now, right off the side of that building towards bissel. And the neighbors behind you, do you guys have an idea, I know the people over here had, said they had issues in the past with, you know, flooding back there. If you could give me an idea, or if Don could give me an idea to stop the backyard from flooding, I more than will, you know, open to fix that, if I get a bigger ditch along the line there.
The water comes from that property? Is that, is that what you think?
We had a lot of issues with them.
Could we have your, uh...
Excuse me?
Could we have your name and address for this?
I'm sorry, come on up.
Mr. Burkhart, are you done?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I'm Joanna Blake, 17 Autumn Lee. I'm right behind them, and there's a big improvement already. And I have no problem with the building, what they want to do, I have no problem. His concern, what Dave brought up, is Union Auto kept raising his land, and every time I went to the town, he would stop, they suggested we put in a drainage, we did work great for two years, he raised it again, he raised it again. And I have pictures of, my chain link fence fell over, because it was so wet. I lost gardens, I lost trees, and I actually lost a shed, because the shed kept sinking, we'd get water in it. I have no problem with this, and I see where he's putting it, I don't have a problem. It's going to buffer the noise for me and give me more privacy. So, I don't have a problem. But if you ever want to see the pictures of what I had, and I mean, there was times that half my backyard was flooded, and I mean, water that you can actually see. It's not as bad now.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Sure.
Was it water that was actually running from the, the roof drains?
Yeah.
And it would just concentrate?
Yeah.
Or it was just the amount of water shedding from the property?